Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yeah.
Mr. Scamro?
Here. Would anyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pauline Boyajian will lead us this evening.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. Delegates and visitors, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have Mr. Fabiano, who is here, would like to discuss the possibility of redoing the inner William P. Gorman Fort Banks playground. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Fabiano and guests.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So, three and a half months ago, my wife and I lost our youngest child, Mariana. She was two weeks shy of her fourth birthday. Mariana was born with every imaginable disability. She couldn't walk, talk, eat, sleep, breathe correctly, any of those. But one thing she could do was she could go out for long walks in her stroller and enjoy the outdoors. So after she passed away, my wife and I decided that we wanted to raise some money and do something in her name. And we thought we need to do something with the playground and raise some money. So we went around the community and talked to different people and came up with the idea of building a whole handicap wheelchair accessible playground. And the first one that came to mind was the Fort Banks School, the inner playground where the kindergarten is today. We'd also heard at the same time that the town had appropriated money to do the soft surface, where right now it's the wood chips and they're going to be changing it over to the other surface. So it was perfect timing to change that equipment before they changed the surface. So...
You can take a seat.
So we felt there's an obvious need in the community for something like this, and what better place than have it attached to one of the schools, where the schools can utilize it all day long and then the public can utilize it after school and on the weekends and the whole summer. I think most of you probably know my brother Frankie here.
Who is Frankie?
And the difference of children with disabilities staying within the community and staying in the school system, not only does that have a financial benefit to the school system, but it has a benefit to the student and the parent. Obviously Frankie's life would be completely different if he had gone to school outside the system. So having something small like this could be the difference of a parent saying, "Let me keep my child in the school system," and then that child grows up with friends their whole life and they have a future that's much better than going outside the school system. So that was our reasoning for choosing the Fort Banks School. And there's obviously a need in the community. There's nothing like this in the community. That's my standpoint from a parent that would have had a child in the wheelchair. Richie Carrion here would like to speak and explain why he feels it's a good reason for the community.
I wrote a few things down. So first of all, my name is Rich Carrion. My wife and I have three children. Currently, two of the three are in the Winter Park Schools. I'm here today to show support for Jimmy Fabiano and his family. I grew up in Winter Park myself, and as a kid, I loved playing outdoors, going to the parks and school areas in general. I felt safe and carefree in this community. As I grew older, my physical ability has changed, and I realize now the importance of having parks and playgrounds that can be used by everyone. Jimmy, his family and friends are planning on raising as much money as we can privately along this project. And Mariana's name to take place at one of our schools is important to us as a community and furthermore teaches our children that we care for others who are not as privileged. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Richie. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
So what is it we need to do? Do we need to make a motion to stop that process?
Let me just bring you up to speed on some of the words that Mr. Fabiano has expressed when he did come to... We talked back in October, probably November, around November. The goal was that we'd like to raise as much money as he can to be allowed to, you know, to have a playground that would benefit students of disabilities. We, him and I together, really took a look at the inner playground at the William P. Gorman School because we felt that, A, that needed to be resurfaced, B, that area could certainly be redone, and more importantly, out of all of it, was that it would benefit our preschool children and kindergarten students that are currently there. So any student that has a disability that's there is the perfect location. So after establishing that perfect location, Mr. Fabiano has gone out to start raising funds. What we then discussed was if the fruition is to come true where he would raise, you know, we would get enough funds, we'd be able to make this become a reality, the first thing we would need to do is be able to bring it to the school committee and talk to the school committee and see if they get the blessing from the school committee to say, "Is this something that you're agreeable to because it is on the school grounds?" And so the purpose of tonight, I believe, and you can correct me, Jimmy, from Run, is to get the blessing from the school committee to move forward on this for, you know, to continue to fundraise, to continue to, if they were to raise enough funds, if we were to see what they have for funds and what we can do, whether it's within capital improvement or any of those other areas, to see what can make this happen, that at least the school committee has given the blessing to say, "If you're able to do it, you can do it here." And I think that's really the focus of tonight. The playground that they've been looking at certainly takes great consideration into handicap, wheelchairs, all of that, and it's just absolutely beautiful. And I have become just as passionate as Mr. Fabiano on this because I think it is the perfect timing and perfect location for us to have this. So I would support it from my perspective.
I'd like to make a motion. Could I ask a couple of questions before we get to the motion? Just so that we make sure that our motion is designed properly to cover this project. Who would be in charge of this project? Mr. Fabiano, I'm assuming, will be in charge of raising funds for it in conjunction with Parks Committee?
Parks Committee and Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. Mr. Driscoll has agreed to check on our parks to make sure that they're up to standards that the law requires, and the DPW takes care of our school parks for us to a large degree. But in the design and the construction, who would be overseeing that?
That would most likely have to fall under the school because it would be on our... So it would fall under the facilities director, just as the playground new, what do we call that?
Surface.
Surface would fall under the facilities director.
So kind of on the same lines, the fundraising, and then we'd have a motion later on down the line to accept...
The gifts.
The donation or gift, and then to put it towards that project.
That would be cool.
Just so everybody knows, the idea behind it is mostly it's going to, instead of being steps and climbing, it'll be more ramps and designed like that. And one of the big pieces is it's called an aeroglider where it allows, it looks like a big raft, and it allows two wheelchairs and it has two benches on the side for the other children to be on it, and it works like a seesaw. So it gives the children the ability to, that are in wheelchairs, be a part of the playing. And it also allows them to use the ramps and go to different areas within the equipment.
I'm totally behind this endeavor, and I appreciate you doing it. I think it's awesome. Do you have a committee set up that if people in the public want to contact you or other... Do you have a committee set up for this project?
I would say we could go to the Parks Committee. It's an easier way to get in touch. Or you can get in touch with myself, Parks Committee, Parks and Rec.
So would it be okay if we directed people to contact you or Sean?
Absolutely.
You do have a site too, don't you?
I do online. I have one, a GoFundMe account online under Mariana Fabiano Memorial Fund. Or you can mail it to Mariana Fabiano Memorial Fund, P.O. Box 37, Winter Park, Mass. 02152, which is the Viking Pride P.O. Box, and they're allowing me to use it. And Viking Pride has already approved $5,000 donation to this as well. And the first week of fundraising, we already have $25,000.
Wow.
Great job.
So it's already taken off and it's going well.
Do you have any estimate of how much money you would like to raise? Mr. Driscoll, you want to take that question?
It's got a need about, for that description that James gave, looking at all $90,000 without counting the surfacing, for the ideal Cadillac of Fox. And it looks incredible. I will tell you, it's, James done a great job researching it, and it would be great for the community as a whole to have something like that in that town. It's a great asset to have.
We've been in touch with a few other charities and companies. Massport, I've gotten in touch with, United Way, I've gotten in touch with, so waiting for responses from them as well for some donations.
It sounds like this committee would need to do two things, whether it's tonight or at some point in the future. One would be to accept the gift, and the other would be to allow the construction. Those are the two things I can think of right now that would need to be permitted from the school committee.
I don't know if this is a possibility or not, and I know it's kind of... I don't know exactly how the process works, but it does seem like this is going to turn into a community event where everybody's putting in a little something. And if there's a way that the school department could approve some money towards this project as well, not a large sum, but just a small sum like everyone else, I think that would go a long way to everyone else feeling comfortable of saying, "Yes, I will donate to this as well." I don't know where that goes, and I don't know who makes that decision, but I think it would help other people feel more comfortable donating to it as well.
How long a period of time? If you had $90,000 right now, what period of time, and assuming that this was good weather?
What I would, I don't know. All I've been trying to plan on doing is have it done in the middle of July because I would imagine Ms. Pearson would want that done at that time, after school starts and before the summer ends, somewhere in that timeframe. Because the last thing I want to do is hold up that project being done with the soft surface because I know they've been waiting for this for a long time. So my goal is to have everything ready to go when they're ready to go, which I would imagine is July.
I just have one question. So has someone come out to measure that area, see if you have enough? That was my only concern, is that you wouldn't have enough space there.
There's enough space. Now, it might be, where the equipment goes and how we have to redesign in there, the whole area, there's plenty of space. There's that surrounding area, whatever you want to call it, that kind of keeps the...
Open space.
That keeps the chips in place. That might have to be expanded a little bit. Not the fence, but just that area that's around the playground.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Fabiano? Jimmy, I don't think we can accept a gift because there is no gift at this time, and we can't approve construction because there is no concrete plan at this time. So I would like to make a motion that the school committee supports and encourages Mr. Fabiano in this project. Perfect. I think that's...
Can I make a suggestion? I don't know if mine or mine...
Yes, sir.
But at least to dedicate the space that we're talking about so we could get, compare, you know, compare apples to apples with pricing and stuff. That's where it's going to be, so we can come back to you with designs. I think that would be a big plus. It's one thing to support, but just to commit the area...
You're talking about the space inside the fence.
Just the space, the area, yeah.
Right. Exactly. And that's what we would be approving because that's what we've been talking about. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just asking because I'm not sure of the path, but if I listen to Jim, Jim is asking for some donation from the school department to, towards the raising of funds for this very special project. So I guess I'm asking, how do we go about offering the funds?
We would need to sit with Ms. Echols, go over the budget, see where funds may be available.
Okay. Could we make a motion? Or do we have, we haven't voted on your motion?
We haven't voted on my motion yet, and I think that we might want to sit and talk with Susan before we make a motion because we don't know where that money would come from.
No, I agree. What I was going to say is that at the first opportunity, and maybe at our next school committee, that we already have a meeting... I'm sorry, John?
No, I was just going to say that we will put the request in however we can through capital improvement. That's, you know, there is funding out there. I mean, that they've, you know, the town has approved certain things for capital improvement. We can certainly, I can put into the town manager through the town council to also... I, because, and correct me if I'm wrong again, Jim, but part of what tonight was too was to, what you're doing right now is kind of giving the blessing to move forward. Another part was that, I think, next step that Jim wanted to do was talk to town council. But we wanted to go to school committee first to make sure that everything was in line. And we could certainly, from my standpoint, I will certainly put a letter together to the town manager and the town council requesting that they consider this as part of a capital improvement idea because it's, you know, and that we're going to raise a lot of money but that we do step up and put a little money towards it as well. They are, they have approved in the yellow for starting for next fiscal year, the resurfacing. So that was part of something that already has been approved. So it's not like we haven't done anything yet on that. That's been a big part of that coming out of capital improvement. Whether or not we can put more towards it, that would be something. In the meantime, we can sit down, obviously, and take a look at our budget with you folks to see if there's, you know, something, but we wouldn't probably be able to guarantee anything on that until we got to the end of the year to say, "You know what? We have this, so now why don't we put it that way?" If that's the direction that the committee says, you know, that's the direction to do it. So, but we do have a couple options. We can take a look at it. And we've got the powers that be in this room tonight, which is great.
I will be going to town council, the next town council meeting. I am on the agenda to speak for a few minutes there as well. So I will be bringing that up to them as well.
And Jim, we can give you personal donations from each, as a school committee or as individuals, which I know that we would like to do...
Absolutely.
Once we have a time to sit and discuss where we would like to go with that. And if I may say, and I know we have passed the motion, if I can say, I know how much you and your family have done for our town and especially for our students that have been so much in need. I know your mom and dad and yourself and your family have always been there for all of children who need, and I, as you had said earlier, there isn't anybody better than Frankie to show an example of what our town has done for our children, and I thank you very, very much.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, but we do not yet have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holden.
I have an amendment. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have an amendment to the motion. I'd like to amend the motion to say that the school committee endorses and authorizes the construction of a handicap playground at Gorman Fort Banks School contingent upon approval of final plans for construction.
And funding.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end of that.
And funding.
Contingent upon approval of final plans of construction and funding.
Which will definitely go.
You're asking the school, your amendment would ask the school committee to approve it.
Yeah, and I don't even need the word "funding." Contingent upon approval of final plans of construction. That says we approve it. We haven't seen the plans, but we will approve the plans if they meet the school committee's approval.
I'll second the amendment.
You're asking for approval without seeing the plans.
Contingent upon seeing the plans. We're approving the, we're approving, my request is to approve the project. In other words, we're giving them the green light to go ahead, but we're not going to allow it to go ahead until we have... It's contingent upon the school committee approving the plans because it is on school committee property.
So you have another go at it when it comes to it?
Yeah. I think it's a little bit strong emotion, and I think it, I feel more comfortable with it.
In... Okay.
John had a question.
Comment for discussion. Are you ready? Did you want to say something first?
We have, we have an amendment. We don't have a second on the amendment.
No.
So I have a second amendment, okay. Now, discussion?
I just wanted to say, thank you for coming, and I, you couldn't have said it better, both of you, Richie and Jim, that, you know, students who are, who live in this town should be educated in this town and play with the other children in this town, and whatever we can do to help that happen. I'm 100% behind, and I do know that Linda Bressard from the Parks Committee, Sean Driscoll from Parks and Rec have great experience building and overseeing these kinds of projects. And, you know, I know, Jim, you're in good hands with consulting with these people and the experience of the vendors that they've used, and, you know, whatever I can do or whatever we can do to help get this out and rolling, you know, as smoothly as possible. So I'm 100% behind this motion, and we'll be voting yes.
Do you have the amendment written?
I do.
Could you read it back to us, please?
The school committee endorses and authorizes construction of the project contingent on approval of the final plans of construction?
The construction of the handicap playground at Gorman Fort Banks.
Okay.
And Mr. Perrin, seconded that amendment. We're going to vote on the amendment first, and then we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, is there any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approval of the amendment is unanimous. We'll now vote on the motion itself. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, we're going to vote now, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Fabiano.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I also would like to thank, who I don't want to thank, I forgot you, Rich, and to thank you and your family for all that you have done and for the wonderful example you are. And thank you.
I'm back anytime. We'll be back soon. I hope so, once.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's a nice year, sport.
Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing no hands being...
To anything.
In relation to anything on the agenda, say it, Frankie.
Frankie.
Yes, please. Could you tell us your name?
Yes. My name is Linda Bressard. My name is Linda Bressard.
Let him, so we can, uh...
And I live at 17 Baby Road, and I'm also the chairperson for the Winter Parks Committee. And I want you all to know, so you can, you're going to have a few months to ponder on this anyway, but just so you're all up to speed, the Winter Parks Committee was formed by Peter Gill about two and a half years ago. And in that timeframe, the group of people that have worked on the parks, we've been able to renovate Pico Park, Pond Street, and just finished Cofflin Park. And the parks are beautiful. They were well in need of being renovated. Thank goodness for Peter's efforts to put together such a great committee because we've done a lot of work, and it's all volunteer. All the donations that we've gotten have, for the most part, been private donations. We've had donations from the town and contributions also from the DPW. So supporting Jimmy with this, Jimmy Fabiano, with this project is a huge honor for us. And I want you to know that he's, he's going to be well taken care of with this, and the vendors that we've worked with to get the parks done are very well educated in what the laws are, the requirements are, the fall zones, as they're called. They, you can't have two pieces of equipment within so many feet of each other so that if somebody falls off of something, they're not going to hit something else. And they're very well versed in this. This is what they do for a living. He's already sent some ideas to us for the handicap playground, and it's going to be beautiful. And it's going to be, you know, like, I'm sure Jimmy was saying, I apologize for being late, but it's going to be accessible not only for handicapped but also for other kids that are not handicapped, that will be able to run up and down the ramps, and they're not even going to know the difference, but it's, you know, geared to handicapped. It's all, it's going to be all inclusive, which is our goal. So I thank you all for your votes tonight, and we look forward to coming back and seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say to Linda and the Parks Committee, they certainly have performed above and beyond all expectations, and I would like to recognize, the original first year person was a school committee woman, Lynn Sullivan. So thank you to you guys, and you certainly have done way beyond what anybody ever could have expected. Thank you. And will continue to, by the way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Mr. Gill, this town has moved in a very positive direction under your leadership, I must say.
Yes, absolutely.
Next are the minutes of December 22nd, 2014, for approval. Make a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion on the minutes? Questions? Comments? Did anybody pick out the misspelled word in the minutes? I'm just kidding. Ms. Ames has never misspelled a word. We will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Polino abstains.
There are no subcommittee reports. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. It was certainly exciting getting back last week, as you all experienced one of those exciting days where I had to make some decisions. And on the two-hour delay, I stand behind that decision. I think it was the best decision I could have ever made at the time, knowing the situation that our buses were in at that timeframe. And unfortunately, the next day, our buses did not work at that timeframe in the morning. And fortunately, we had a pretty good backup plan, which was our drivers going around, including myself. But we were able to make sure that our kids were able to get into school, and then by the afternoon, we had the buses backing up and running, and we'd been successful thus far. But, you know, it was interesting because there was a lot of comments that were made out there that, oh, kids can't go to school in cold, or different things like that. And the thing that you have to remember is that, and I, I just want to remind the community that, yes, we can certainly go to school in cold. The thing is, is that we have some children, though, that are out there. I have to worry about all our children, and there are children that might be out there without a jacket, without gloves, without hats and stuff. And in these types of temperature, those could become, you know, an issue, and so we don't want that, and we want our kids to be protected. So it worked out well for us in that sense. It was also a good opportunity to see how a delay would work, and, you know, and we didn't miss any school. So, and my feeling too is that the more we can make sure that we're in school now, the better off we are in June because it's just, you know, those days at the end of the year don't seem to add up as much as the days that we have here. In regards to the...
I'm sorry, could I, I'd like to interrupt for one second. I brought my children to school after the two-hour delay, and then I went food shopping at Stop &amp; Shop in Revere, where I saw a lot, I saw a lot of Revere schoolchildren with their mothers and fathers. They got out and they went food shopping. Our children went to school.
My biggest concern was that, well, what was interesting was that on the Monday night, or whatever night it was before we... night, or whatever night it was before we had the event, I was at the hockey game and it was just as cold that night and we were packed at the hockey game and the basketball game and I said to myself, well, they can come out for this. We can certainly come out two hours later in the morning. But the, it's just, I was worried that if we didn't have school, that we might have kids that would just wander outside and be outside and get themselves into a situation that they shouldn't be in. And so those are the things that we have to take into consideration. I feel we're getting, not we, I feel, I'm getting a little better at making these decisions at times. Sometimes I throw out to have too much input from people, but it is what it is. I, that's who I am and I just wanna make sure-
You've always made the correct call, sir.
You know, we do what we can.
Every time.
Not every, but.
Gary, if I can say, the superintendent breezed over about him picking up some kids. I just happened to have had a meeting with John that morning and it was getting later and later, waiting at Patty's. Oh, Mary Alice, I need to tell you that John just went out and picked up about four stops of kids who he calls. Okay, so John comes back in, he takes off his winter gear, he sits down, and Matt Crombie calls him from the high school that there are five more kids sitting down at the point, at Point Shirley and two more kids, those were high school children, there were two more kids from the Cummings School, students, excuse me. And so at that day, John took at least fourteen kids to school that day. So I just want, I, to me, I know that there is a lot of forms in Winthrop, but I always believed there's more beautiful crowns and I'm just saying, that's what makes us a wonderful community because we do do things like that for our students and we have a leader that recognizes that and I thank him.
Perrin.
I like that you sought the input. You got the town manager, the police chief, the fire chief, and everyone kinda mulled it over, like, what if the buses don't start? I mean, they're diesel. Diesel doesn't start traditionally without being heated up. They're not in a heated area. I thought it was very important that we kinda did a dry run with two hours delay and actually did pay off, so I'm glad you did that. I'm glad you got all the input you did.
Yes, Ms. Sullivan.
I think you made the right call too and I know that I was one of those people that said to myself, well, I have to go to work. I don't know what I'm gonna do with a two-hour delay and thought to myself that it's gonna be just as cold in two hours as it is at eight o'clock and I was wrong and you made the right call and you did, I just want people to know that public safety officials were consulted and it wasn't just you thinking about it and making your own call. So, you know, you did make the right decision and, and there are a lot of anxious parents that have to get to work the next morning and, you know, what happened in our family was that a neighbor was nice enough to say, let me take the kids to school. So, you know, just reach out to your neighbors, reach out to your friends, reach out to your kids' friends, parents and, you know, figure it out, but the public safety is important.
Well, there lies the dilemma sometimes is that when you're trying to make it so that the parents can come up with their alternative plans, you feel like, okay, it's best to do it in the evening if you can. On this particular situation, I said it would be best because we knew it wasn't gonna change from being cold. What I've learned in the past is that sometimes I've, I've reached out to parents and I will say it again tonight to parents, when it comes to snow, you need to set yourself up your alternative plans because in Winthrop, it really is not best to make that decision until five o'clock in the morning because Winthrop is far different than Revere. It's far different than other various areas and even Boston at some points. So I've learned that on that, I wait, but on this one, it was, it was at that time. So, anyway, I don't know. So with that, I did wanna make sure that everybody knew that the transportation, the buses had been taken care of, they are back up on the road and we have been able, you know, in diesel buses, you have to plug them in and so we were able to get them plugged in now too down over at the Little League Field. We've been able to set that up, which has been helpful because it's gonna get cold again this week. I mean, it's not gonna be to the cold that it was last week, but it's supposed to drop down by Thursday again. Couple of things. One, I wanted to just let the committee know, as we've talked about in the past, that Mr. Gobio will be leaving us January thirty-first. In the interim, I have put Matt Serino as the interim athletic director. Matt Serino will handle all athletic director activities from now until the remainder of the school year. Goldie St. Louis, who is our lead bus driver, will handle all of the transportation issues, scheduling for the buses, making sure that the maintenance needs to happen. He'll work with myself and Ms. Echols on things that need to, to, to go ahead and he'll take care of that from February on. I felt that this was a good opportunity to utilize folks that are driving the buses. They know what the buses need, they know how to set, you know, they can set up those appointments and basically you're working right away with Mr. Serino for athletics because he's the one who's organizing those buses for anything that's other than, you know, school activities unless there's like some field trips or something and then they can go through. We'll, we'll figure that out. I'll have the principals let me know to get to them. In the meantime, I'd like to post the position of the athletic director, position for, starting in July. And there are a couple of things that I would like to do and one is that in looking at, now having an opportunity to take a look at the current athletic director slash director of, of physical education slash transportation person and all of that, it's just too much. There's just too much going on in that type of role where primarily the person has been doing eighty percent athletic director and twenty percent transportation, although I think Mr. Gobio would sometimes say to you, he's doing sixty percent transportation and forty percent athletic direct, you know, and it's, there's a lot, so it goes back and forth on that. So what I'm looking to do for next year is to have an athletic, full-time athletic director's person and have a, probably something like a part-time transportation person that would handle not only the transportation for the, the regular school buses, but also take an opportunity now to combine with the special ed school buses. So we have someone that's handling those types of things and Ms. Echols and I are working on that from budgetarily and we'll be putting that as a proposal in the budget as we move forward for next year's budget on those things. But in the meantime, we know we're gonna need an athletic director and I feel that I'd like to get started on that position. I would like to, you know, whoever, if I, Mr. Chairman, sit down, create the committee. I think that on this committee, it should be some, some representation of the athletic subcommittee. It should be some coaches, the other persons who work and, you know, obviously the administration, whether, high school principal, whether I sit on that at the beginning or not or wait till it comes to me, but I think this is a good opportunity to get, get started on.
And just to throw out, maybe something Viking Pride?
Absolutely.
They're a big part of our-
Absolutely. I think it would be good if we just, you know, put together the committee, get it out there, let's post it, let's get rolling, let's get these things going because it is a position that I think you're gonna have a lot of applicants that are gonna come forward and I think it's something that would be of interest.
Mr. Perrin.
Just, I, I know we're talking about splitting the position into two positions, one being a part-time position. Are we gonna reduce the salary of the athletic director?
Yes.
By that twenty percent or whatever the cost is for that other component?
That's the plan right now.
Okay. And then the other part of it was, I'm a little concerned about it being part-time because things arise during the day if someone's not here to handle that. I mean, is it gonna, if, as long as it falls back on the athletic director, if someone's there to control it, I mean, it's a safety net because if someone's here twenty hours a week and on the second half of the day, oops, bus broke down, what do we do? The bus is here, you know, I mean, I just think it's important to have availability of someone to make a decision.
It's, it's an interesting, and I, and I agree with you. I think that we do need to take a look at it even, even more and maybe we should just go ahead and try to put it through the budget and put it as a full-time to see how we can, you know, what the funding source would be on that. Because it's an interesting position. It's, it's very similar in the sense of an athletic director where it, it is odd hours.
Schedule, yeah.
It's a, you know, I mean, there's a lot of, you've got, your, your heavy is the morning, the, you know, before school and after school and primarily a lot of it is after school and weekends because there's quite a bit of stuff that occurs during, you know, making sure and what's happening on that, so.
I just don't wanna see the savings on the buses get swallowed up by having a second person, part-time or full-time. As long as it, as it covers itself, I just don't wanna see a situation where we went from the rent of the buses, Viking Pride being generous enough to give us the buses and then swallow up that savings just to schedule the budget.
And I do think that we're showing a huge commitment by saying, you know what? We've realized that, you know, when people say, I know years ago, part of the thing when it was going back and forth in the buses, and I even joked about it the other day, was, you know, I'm in the transportation business. Well, guess what? We are in the transportation business.
Right.
So we, we need to accept that and we need to move on, but we need to also have the right positions that are going to make this so that we're not worrying about it.
Mr. Holden.
Now, if we're combining our transportation with the special ed, I thought in the special ed department, they had one person that was kinda in charge of the transportation, wasn't booking cabs, booking vans.
They do, they do.
So there's money there to create this position, as Mr. Perrin's talking about.
It's a, it's a little stipend that's added on to the current position right now. It's about thirteen hundred dollars that was a stipend that's given for transportation out of that component. But yes, we're, we're gonna look at all ends to try to create this position that we need, that we feel that would work best.
Can we look at the, at the funding, what the salary's gonna be on this new, well, not, not just the new position for the busing, but I'm looking at with that huge responsibility and, and as he's saying, between twenty and sixty percent of the time, if we're gonna go on for an athletic director and we're not gonna combine those two, we need to be prepared to have a significantly less salary because the responsibility's gonna be a lot less.
I agree. If you're gonna, see, there's, there's a couple of rules of the thought process here. An athletic director is primarily the, if we reduce the role that Mr. Gobio was into as just the athletic director, we've taken a lot of the major responsi-, some other major responsibilities out of that position other than handling just the athletic component. Right now, the other components were evaluating gym teachers and creating curriculum and creating transportation and making sure all those things. So now you're just organizing that to be a position of that, so you have to look at what that value is.
What the value, right.
As opposed to being a curriculum instruction person in that other area.
If I, if I may say, I'm, I'm looking at the past and we have gone through an array of different positions of athletic directors. We have had full-time athletic directors, we have had part-time athletic directors, we have had athletic directors who is now one of the best athletic directors in Beverly and Mr. Coffey, James, and he actually was working for under thirty thousand dollars to work as an athletic director. So I think that if we're going to keep a good, solid athletic director, we can't be looking at salary, though I agree that we can't be looking because Peter's salary was compensated by him doing all of these various jobs. But I think that when we look at it, that when it's time to post what that position's going to look like, that we need to take in accordance that it is the athletic, but that I think, and I may be wrong, but I think most athletic directors today are doing phys ed or some portion of evaluating the phys ed. They're not necessarily in charge of the whole curriculum, but they definitely are in charge of evaluating their, their people and also, I mean, but I don't think that we should attach transportation onto that and curriculum onto that, though that may jive together. I just think that we really need to seriously look at what we're going to ask our athletic director to do and then decide on that salary according to those.
If I may, I just want folks to know that I'm only recommending that we continue to be full-time as an athletic director.
I agree.
I would never wanna put this, and I know that I lived through the years, my son went to school here through the years, I was on the school committee through those years where we had part-time and, and to, to just make a correction on your comment, on James Coffey, he did it for twelve thousand dollars.
Oh, was it twelve thousand?
One year.
Can we get it back?
You know, as a stipend. I don't think so. But, and I know that Mr. Finn had done it one year in that, the first year that they had done it. Winthrop is a, is a strong athletic community. It deserves a full-time athletic director position and that's the intention that we're going to go on and I, I don't see that changing. The question is, is that as we move forward with the budget, we need to also take a look at the fact that we need to have, whether it be full-time or not, in the transportation area. We need to, we need to get this under wraps so that we're all, you know, we've, we're in control of what's happening here and we're not burning people out. So, any other questions on that? Okay. The, tomorrow I will be attending the superintendent's advisory council, that is to the commissioner of education. As you, as I've stated to you before, there are representatives from each round table. I'm the representative from the North Shore Round Table and basically tomorrow, they're going to be discussing at the agenda that I'm at, staggering schedule for fingerprinting because I know that that's an issue that's, we've been talking about for our current employees, not new employees. Feedback on the flexibility waivers, state plan to ensure equitable access to effective educators, sharing the DDM resources across districts. They're looking at follow-up demands for teacher time with the preschool accreditation program. And so that's something that they're talking about on that because the Department of Early Education and Care is also revamping their whole accreditation. And then of course, park and proposed changes to the competency determination. So there's a lot of stuff that's gonna be discussed tomorrow. These are mandates that come down from the commissioner and we try to put our input in and that way we can come and I can give you those updates as we go along. The next thing that I had put on, I do also have is that the high school has put together a couple of initiatives, academic initiatives, and I could've done those under, I realized earlier, under academics, but since I've got the floor now. I went to the meeting last week at the high school PTA or Parent Teacher Council meeting and Ms. Bellisstock was talking about some of the wonderful programs that are coming in. Right now, there's an academic support program. She's received a grant on the academic support program from the Department of Education that focuses on 10th grade students who've earned less than two forty on their eighth grade MCAS. And so what's happened is they've got an opportunity twice a week for instruction before or after school. This grant will provide, they have teachers that are going to be teaching on this and it's for students to get some more preparation work for the upcoming MCAS exam so that they can get to that two forty proficient range. So that's an area, so that's one initiative that's happening. We also have an extracurriculum tutoring program that has been put into place. This was a donation that was given by the Viking Pride Foundation that we had accepted at the beginning and what this allows is for students that are involved in extracurricular or sports programs that need a little extra tutoring because, you know, sometimes they can't handle the multitasking of being on in sports at the same time or in a, in a club and they're trying to make sure that their work is being taken care of and they're doing their work. We've, this program meets twice a week for an hour before school and that focuses on students who are in danger of failing or failing courses. So we wanna be proactive. That's our aggression here. We wanna be proactive with these things. Viking Pride came to me about this, about a year ago, talked to me about it because they said they've seen it in other districts and we wanna make sure that it's happening and we're very fortunate that they were able to give us this and I wanted people to know that this stuff is happening now. And the last thing is, is once again, we're bringing back the SAT prep course for 11th grade students. This course meets once a week for three hours and it's taught by Pearson-trained teachers, which is our teachers. We trained them last year, Mr. Beck, Mr. Parsons, their lead teachers, their, and the reason why it's a three-hour course is because for half of that course, it'll be all math and the other half of that course will be all E L A. Now, we did try to schedule it, I know that there was some, they tried, I think it's, is it Monday night or they're working it on? And it's a-
Tuesday.
You know, with sports programs, it can be tricky because they've got, they're working it right after basketball season.
Yes.
And they're trying to get it in on those Tuesdays so that kids can participate that want to do it. But yes, it's February to April two thousand fifteen.
And it's a hundred dollars.
It's a hundred dollars. It's well worth it. When the course was not being taught by us and they had to go through Princeton to take the course, it was four hundred and fifty dollars a person. And this, you know, they're, they're working with their own teachers and I know that last year, the, the students who took it found it to be successful for them. So it's a lot of strategies and things that are happening.
Mr. Superintendent, also the midterms are start, you know, will be coming around the corner, so.
Yeah, then next week, I believe, yes.
Yes, so just so parents are aware, they are upon us and just to, you know, have your children get some good rest, good food and make sure that they're prepared to take them.
Finally, as of last, in the December eighth meeting, I know that we finally were able to settle on the- to settle on the evaluation tool and all of the good stuff that comes with that, and the goals were approved. Tonight, I have submitted to you sort of a self-assessment on where I'm at within those goals. So we've given it to you online, and we've given it to you as a hard copy so that you'll have that opportunity to take a look at it and, you know, make your judgments on what's happening in those particular areas. So, if I can go right into personnel?
Please.
Basically, under personnel, I have no appointments, no resignations, and no retirements. We do have a few postings, as you talk, we have an ELL posting, because we are doing an ELL tutoring program, after-school work, workshops in all of the schools, we're working on that. We also have, we've, we've posted the graduation coordinating position. Last year, that position was, Mr. Duffy handled that, it's a stipend, but this year, the two ladies have said, why don't you post it out there, because it is a lot of work. So we're trying to.
Still nice job, Mr. Duffy.
Yeah, so, who knows? Maybe she'll come back and just do that position, so. We have MCAS support positions, Title I positions that are up there. These are tutoring positions. And then, of course, we are having a difficult time finding a lunch monitor, so we've posted it a couple of times. So if you know anybody that's interested in a lunch monitor position, it's available. Thank you.
Are we still looking for crossing guards?
I've always looking for crossing guards.
Good on Walden Street and going, not today, but.
You know, I mean, we've, we've posted them, we've had them, we've got a couple, so, you know, you look good in a crossing guard outfit. I've done that too, you know? I've been a crossing guard at times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next is the warrant. We have a warrant SVW-15-11 in the amount of $125,448.15. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Sharkey, second. Ms. Bellino, any questions, comments on the warrant? We'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, unanimous. Next is the payroll warrant dated November 19, 2014, in the amount of $661,608.62. Is there a motion to approve the payroll warrant?
Motion.
Second by Ms. Sullivan, second by President Gill. Any questions about the payroll warrant? We will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Speech of James Epstein. There are no requests for use of buildings for this meeting.
It's amazing.
Just one question on the warrant.
We have approved it, you know?
Yeah, I have another question.
Okay.
On the plumbing, there's one for $6,600, repair heating pipes. What school was that?
Be here, right?
I'm not sure.
I guess what I'm getting to is, if it is for here, does it have to come out of our funds or did it come out of transition money or your building money?
No, that would come, that would, it would still come, we're responsible.
I think that's the vents, actually.
But it just says repair heating pipes.
Yeah, but it would be our responsibility still to.
What's the vendor?
Keep the building, so.
Excuse me?
What was the vendor?
Bonito.
Excuse me?
Bonito.
I believe.
I mean, it was a substantial amount of money, and I was just wondering if it can come out of transition money. I mean, it was.
I could certainly inquire, but there is a.
Whatever, new school money or whatever.
Right, we have to, we have to draw the lines on certain things when it comes to what is it that.
Yeah, it was the high school.
What, you know, what are we responsible for as, as the building maintenance that we have? And we have money in there to take care of those, and some of those were the, the vents that we had to fix.
Right.
Other areas, so, for example, this past, the, the heating system that we put into the life skills room, life, the swing space picked that up, because that was an additional thing that was being put into there, as well as the handicap bathroom in there and all of those areas, so. But I do go through everything with a fine tooth, and my counterpart here, she makes sure I do, to make sure we get what we need.
Good luck, you're not freezing.
Does anybody have any new business? Yes, Mr. Holden.
Did the curriculum director, is he on board now officially?
Not till the 26th of January.
Okay, okay. Because we'd like to meet him.
Yes.
And also.
I have him coming to the meeting on the.
Thursday?
That, the Thursday.
Thursday.
Are you going to be able to be at the Thursday curriculum meeting?
That is the one that's at 6 o'clock?
No.
That's 3:15.
3:15.
3:15 in the afternoon?
Yeah.
I have it penciled in.
Okay, because he will be there, and then I was going to have him come to the.
Policy meeting before or after, but to discuss with everybody.
Oh, okay.
I was going to have him come to the first school committee meeting, which is the 26th.
Throw it out to him, not immediately that meeting, but I'd like to see goals, strategic plans. We've done this before with curriculum people, and kind of a whole year went by.
Absolutely.
So I'd like to see whoever it is saying, this is my plan, this is what I'm going to use, these are what I need, and.
So you're saying you want an entrance plan?
An entrance plan.
An entrance.
And goals.
And then goals as you go forward.
Right, and I know the first meeting's not, you know, he's not even getting paid yet, so.
But I will tell you, he's been working on things with us.
Oh, I know, I've heard he's been in the buildings, yes.
You know, so, which, can I just, on that note, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One thing that I wanted to just, in regards to subcommittees and stuff, I meant to say this earlier, was that one of the things that I'm trying to do as myself, as a superintendent, and learn to delegate even more so, is that when it comes to curriculum subcommittee, I'm going to have my curriculum director be in charge of that. My athletic director's going to be in charge of the athletic subcommittee. My facilities director, I'd like him to be in charge of my buildings and ground subcommittee. And right now, the ones that I feel strongly to be, you know, to be on in that is, of course, the budget and policy, because those areas, you know, we deal with that a lot. But I wanted folks to know that I'm going to move them out of the superintendent's office, put them in more of these meetings moving forward into areas that are easier for the public to come to, but also delegate those types of responsibilities, because I think they're the experts. That's why we put these people in those positions, to be the experts, and they need to handle that. So, thank you for letting me put that in.
My pleasure, sir. Public comment again.
Mr. Chairman, just.
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of comments on the budget prep. I don't know if you want to do it now on the public comment or on the public relations.
I think that you could do it right now.
Okay. The budget season, believe it or not, is starting, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments about how we can proceed in the, in the budget. We've had, with the creation of a town council and the form of government change, one of the goals was that the school department and the, what used to be sort of working separately, school department versus the town, or vice versa, we've made some significant progress, I believe, in bringing the two together over the last several years. Part of the reason that the council president is on the school committee is that he's the liaison between the school committee and the council. I would like to get into the budget season this year feeling that we are a town with several departments, one of which is the school department, entering with that, with that mode. I know we've had some tension and some uncomfortable moments in the last couple of years of budget preparation. The school department budget subcommittee has a meeting tomorrow night where I assume they're going to start to make the plans for the budget, not with numbers or anything, but just, just the plans. The finance commission, which is partially citizens, partially council members, has a meeting set up for the 22nd of the month. Now, my suggestion and my urge is that we get together now, not in, in May or June, when we, when we start to discuss budget issues. We had, it was my responsibility a short time ago to, to prepare a budget timeline, which I did, and then a council budget goals, which by the charter, I had to present to the council, and then a State of the Union, a State of the Town message to the council. Making the assumption that, that everybody watches the council meetings and reads the website was probably not a good assumption. So what I did today was I took those, although they were already posted on the website, I took them and circulated those documents to the, to the school committee and to everybody who's involved in the budget process. I urge you to read them, to consider where the, where the budget process is starting, and let's start it now in January, and, and work together as a team to develop a townwide budget of a town that has several departments. So, and I would urge that there be somebody, attend the finance commission first meeting on the 22nd at 6:30. It was posted initially as the 21st, but it was changed to the 22nd, and that's the way it's posted. Their agenda is posted on the, on the website as well. So take a look at it. I would urge that, I will be there, but I would urge that somebody who's responsible for preparation on the school department budget meeting, and let's start off on the same foot. And yes, we will have conversations, and we won't always agree, but let's do it together. Thank you.
Very.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Any public relations at this time?
Two small things.
Yes, sir.
Not really small, but just that the Polonorma Fajella Scholarship will be giving away $237,500 in scholarships this year to graduating seniors, and $12,500 for AP testing. Also, congratulations to our superintendent's wife, Trina Cerro, who have been chosen to receive the Massachusetts Commendation sponsored by the Massachusetts Cultural and Arts Council for Leadership in the Creative Arts for Youth. The ceremony will be held on Tuesday, February 24th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Massachusetts State House. It's a great honor.
I will do.
Can I do one more public relations?
Yes.
The girls' hockey team was 5-0-0 the last time we met, as of tonight, they're 6-0-0.
Wow.
And hopefully, by 9 o'clock, they'll be 7-0-0.
That's a long.
We're starting a game at 8 o'clock tonight, and I guess I have a little special interest in the girls' hockey team.
What special interest do you have, President Gill?
I, I know the goalie very well.
Who's the goalie?
She's my girl.
You agree on that?
Her last name is not Gill, but she has a lot of Gill blood.
It is Howard, I believe.
It is Howard, Gretchen Howard, yes.
Gretchen Howard.
She's the goalie.
She's the goalie, yes.
She's an excellent goalie.
She is. In fact, she was featured in the Boston Globe two weeks ago.
That's right. She was, she was featured in the Boston Globe.
Thank you for your questions, Mr. Chairman.
Is that game at home tonight, or is it?
No, it's at Rivers School.
The Western?
Yeah.
Speaking of public relations, I don't know if you've read the papers at all, but it's Ms. Burt's first name. She was the, Burt was the former, years ago, when I first, before I came here, she was the hockey goalie for the girls' hockey team.
Katie Burt.
Katie Burt, yeah. She's now leading the U.S. Junior Olympic Team in the, I mean, in the championship game tonight against Canada.
Oh, wow.
So, and she, single-handedly, I guess, last week, when they did the, get to the game where it's overtime and they do the shootout, she successfully won. So it's pretty good to have a former teammate already that far ahead, so.
Yeah, she stopped three in the shootout. You're right.
No powers.
Bellino.
I also want to thank a neighbor, Carolyn Gagnon, who drove around to every bus stop when there was a, when the buses broke down, the two-hour delay. She drove around letting the kids know that the buses broke down. I did sure she took some kids to school.
Yeah, she helped us out.
Yeah.
She was great.
Perhaps we should ask the person who takes over the transportation to have a license so they can drive a bus.
I think it's a great idea. I'm telling you, there's no doubt about it.
That'll be a qualification.
You need to be able to drive a bus, or at least a van.
I could do the van.
Maybe we should.
I've done the van.
Put that in the charter for school committee members. We'll discuss that another time. The chair anticipates going to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining of litigation, and that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public party, and the chair so declares, and the chair does so declare. Make a motion that we go into executive session at this time?
Motion.
Second by Ms. Sharkey. A motion by Ms. Sharkey, second by President Gill. Ms. Haynes, would you call the roll to go into executive session, please? A yes vote will be to go in, a no vote will be to not go in.
Ms. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Bellino?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Mr. Swarro?
Yes. I, we will not be coming back into public session except to adjourn the public session after the executive session is completed.